All right, it is seven o'clock. We've got a few folks coming in, but we'll go ahead and call things to order. This is the Auburnette City Council meeting for Thursday, September 13th, 2018, 7:00 PM. Here in the city of Auburnette, we do do the pledge allegiance. Go ahead and stand and give the pledge. I ask that you do so also, and we'll go ahead and do that at this time. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Thank you, and good evening to everybody. We're glad to see you all here. As you can see, we are continuing with our improvements to City Hall, including our new screen, which we'll be utilizing this evening. Thank you for getting that done, Guy. I would ask that the board go ahead and do roll call for this evening for the record for a forum.
Counselor Saris, here. Counselor Shawn?
Present.
Counselor Henderson?
Here. All right, let the record reflect that we do have council members for a forum this evening. And then also I'd ask, are there any changes? Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
All right. Then I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Saris.
Second.
Second by Henderson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. I want to make sure these folks get their place to set, too, to make sure we have plenty of seating. We'll go ahead and recognize the Lynn County Sheriff's Department at this time for our sheriff's report. Want to turn it over to you, deputy?
Looks like required 43, we put in 95.2, and 39 calls service.
Very good. Looks like we were pretty active this month, so.
Yes. It's like pretty routine calls, man.
Yeah, we've been on a back page today. We're doing pretty good, I guess. You guys are pretty active. We appreciate that. Counsel, any questions for the Lynn County Sheriff's Department?
Appreciate your increased presence with school starting, so just thank you for that.
Any other questions? Thank you, we appreciate it. Have a safe evening. All right, seeing the sheriff's report is complete, we'll go ahead and move forward with the mayor's report. I do have a few things to say, the standard things in reference to our fire station. I'll just give a quick update on that. The chief will have a few things to say, too, in his report, I'm sure, but we are moving forward with that at a pretty good pace. We have the RFP that we've conducted for services that is being reviewed by the Fire Station Review Committee, as well as some members of the city as well, that not only sat on that committee, but a few other folks with the city. So those services basically give us, or that RFP will give us some professional services for the architectural and engineering portions of it that we're going to need to be able to construct that. So, once those folks has reviewed that, we'll get that on the street, and the funding portion of that is also going well. Again, Chief Graham, I'm sure, will address that more within his report. Also, I want to thank the chief and his folks. They did secure additional funding, I believe, almost $5,000 additionally from the E-911 Board. I was there, they did do an excellent presentation, and that's good news for you folks as well for installed property within the new fire station. I know you also received another grant, I'm sure you're going to address that, and I know the funding is going well. Also, I believe, I don't have the exact date in front of you, it's in my book, but I'm sure you'll address that with the change of date for your golf fundraiser as well. So, I'm very impressed with the effort of everybody on the council, the city, the citizens, and especially the chief and the fire department, with how quickly things have progressed with the fire department, a big priority of mine in the city, so we appreciate that. For Public Works, besides your report, not only myself, but Councilman Minson, who isn't here, asked me to note it as well, I'm sure the others will in their reports, the painting of the streets. Really appreciate that, looks very good. And also the side surfacing out there, so improving the shoulders, we appreciate that. I know that that had to be done quickly in between meetings, and we do appreciate that as well. And for the folks in the audience, if you've not attended one of our meetings before, I'm sure that you'll have a lot that you want to say shortly in citizen comments. When we do that, you'll have an opportunity to speak during citizen comments, or if you're here for an actual agenda item that's on here, such as Naylor Estates or something to that effect, you can be recognized at that time and be able to speak. Normally, when we have just one or two people, we're relatively formal about speaking at council meetings to maintain not only time, but order. So, I'll tell you at the time to state your name and your address to show not only that you're a citizen, but to have it for the record that where you're from. Anyway, at that time, you'll have up to five minutes to make comments to the council. If it's a particular issue where we want to have a lot of dialogue, sometimes we suspend that rule and let you have open dialogue, up until a point that if it gets chaotic, then we'll go back and say, "All right, look, we're going to have to recognize you to be able to speak if it looks like things are not going to be orderly." So, I also want to make that comment now, and make sure we have enough seating here, too. All right, so having done my report, I'll move on to the council reports. Counselor, Counselor? Saris, go ahead, sorry.
So, at the last meeting, we recognized a few things that were outstanding on the website, a lot of those are getting buttoned up, so we posted all of the historical agendas and minutes from four years of meetings, starting to put things on the events calendar. I'll be sure to move the golf outing, I realized that had changed, so we'll get that put back to the top and make it a feature by our own. Still working to get email addresses, I know that was one thing that came out in the last meeting, so we're waiting on a few technical things from Mr. Gibbons that needs to support us. I will continue to make improvements as we see them.
Thank you. Finance Council, Councilor Shawn.
I'd like to thank everyone for showing up at this meeting, and I'd like to invite you to come back again. It's good to see many faces out there interested in what's going on.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson, also Public, I see. All right, very good. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the citizen's comments portion of that. There's two portions of citizen comments on our agenda. The first one is for agenda items, so if you wish to talk about a specific agenda item, and I don't mean by an item where you have an item to talk about, that'll come up, and then you'll be able to speak about that also, but a different item on the agenda that you want to talk about, you can do that at this time. And then there's a second portion after that where citizen comments for non-agenda items, so basically if you just want to make a comment, you can do so. Again, if you're here to talk about an item such as Naylor Estates or ACDC, you'll have a time to do that at the appropriate time on the agenda. So, does anyone have any citizen comments about agenda items? Does anyone have any citizen comments about non-agenda items? Okay, so it looks like most folks are here for the specific items that are on the agenda at a later time. Very good. All right, we'll go ahead and conduct our written reports. The first one is from Public Works. I have reviewed that, and I'm sure the council members have also in our packet. Do you have anything additional you'd like to add to that, Guy?
No, just to be prepared, the only thing I should say is to be prepared, we'll have to think about advertising the skid loader for sale, and my reporter talks about the new skid loader being November before we'll get it, but they're offering to let us use a rental unit until it's there, so I think by next meeting, we can get a plan in place to get it advertised, to get it sold, so. I did put that in the report. Other than that, I can't think of anything.
Very good. Any questions on the Public Works report? All right, hearing none, then the city clerk's report is in here. I have read it, thank you for submitting such a detailed one. I know there's some good explanations about some items that are going to come up later. I see the emails are also addressed in there, that those lists are going to be done. I may keep my email address instead of the city one, just because I've established it now for almost a year, but other than that, anything you'd like to add to your report?
No.
All right, very good. And then the fire department report, recognize Chief Graham?
We, like he talked about, the one board gave us about $5,000 for the move radio equipment and stuff, and purchase new stuff for the new station. We also got assistance from firefighter grant from Hema, about $3,000 for that new cascade and fill air packs and stuff. I haven't got official word, but it's on the website that we received it, so I'll wait for it.
Good.
And then the golf tournament got moved because of the weather. It's October 7th, it's Sunday now. There's four spots for teams, so somebody still wants to get a team in.
We'll recruit some of these folks before they leave. Four spots, very good. Oh, I forgot to mention, also, thank you and your crews for being out at the school events. Sounds like you did some work out there the other day, too.
Yep.
With the, oh, he's doing hard. Okay, we appreciate you following up on that. Okay, good. All right. Okay, any questions for Chief Graham?
Sure.
Oh, we have citizen comments.
Is there timelines for construction, what things are going to start going in that direction, or are we just still in development stage?
Are you asking about the fire department?
Yes.
Oh, sure, but you wanted to address some of that, or any council can as well?
We need to get plans, and that's what that RFP for is talking about. Somebody with them, we could bid maybe next spring.
Yeah, I think that that's realistic.
Next year, too, hopefully.
So, with that engineering and the plan going on, assuming we're going to look into, we might talk about this here later, but a lot of water coming down, the river melting down area there.
We're going to vote.
I see you guys were out there pumping water the other night.
I've been out there.
Water drainage station, is it something that?
I've taken pictures of it. We should be high.
When we get to that water drainage issue, we've discussed that in detail, and we're going to propose some possible solutions with that. Will you incorporate that portion into what we've talked about for the portions west of town, including the fire stations and things like that? So, we will address that at that time, because that's been, we've talked about that separately, but we'll just include that as one of the options in that presentation or that work guide.
Would that be included in the RFP use?
Yeah, the engineering portion is included in there. I believe that's in like the sixth or seventh section of that, where that has to be addressed as part of the geo, geo, what's that big word? The one where they have to do a full survey of the land and everything else prior to building, so.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Any other questions for the chief?
So, you do have on here about your computer. Mayor, is that something we can ask Danielle to reach out to Mr. Gibbons and do an assessment on?
Yeah, I saw that in your report, this one, it's either not working or booting up or working or whatever.
It's super slow. I tried to do the report that night, and I gave up and went on my cellphone, because after an hour sitting there, it kind of didn't come up, but.
They're not that expensive anymore, it might just be worth swapping out for anyone?
I bought it when I worked here, six, seven years ago.
Okay, so this is installed property for the fire department. Would you work up a quote and get that for him, and then we'll get that taken care of?
Maybe you can get it going in the meantime, and then.
I think it's up and going now, but it's just slow.
Yep.
Other questions, Councilman?
Did you get our website yet for the?
I pulled some pictures, I linked to your Facebook on the new city website, so that should all be.
That kind of looked, I didn't see the actual fire department website, not on or not?
No, no, still working on that, so make sure, especially with the events, you guys are doing a lot on Facebook, so I want to make sure to get that link pulled in. And then I brought in some picture slideshows.
We also did Instagram, too.
Oh, I did that, okay.
We just, just did it.
Can I, do we have more? I always make sure everybody has a seat.
We are out of chairs.
There's a chair, right?
Okay, oh, there's one up front there, too. I can.
There's one more. I'm leaving soon, so.
That's your cue, huh?
Yeah, we got two more up here, too. Thank you, chief.
Yeah, there's two seats here, and Danielle's chair and the desk could be used, too.
And there's one standing on.
Oh, okay, very good. Yeah, you can stand on the floor, just make sure folks have a chair.
And were we working on the GoFundMe yet? The video for that?
We've got some video, we just got to decide what we're going to say and finish it.
Okay.
So, yeah, we started, we just have a chair.
Okay, keep me posted on that, that would be home paint worthy, so.
They like the back, because that's where that cool air is coming from, too. I don't blame them. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to item 11, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the items on the consent agenda?
No.
All right. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Shawn.
On second.
Second by Saris. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, new business. This is the time and place in where we're here. Item number one, Naylor Estates, the water drainage issue. Again, I will remind the folks that just came in, because we're such a large crowd, I will go ahead and suspend some of the rules we have, where we maintain order by recognizing people one at a time to make comments and/or questions. We'll start it with an open dialogue, but again, if we don't maintain order to where we can answer them effectively and things like that, then we'll have to go back to being recognized by the chair or myself to be able to speak. Again, this is not only to do things timely, but this allows everybody to get their say in, so. The only thing that I ask is that when you speak, that you state your name and address for the record, so we know that where you're at. Will you bring up the map also, please? So we know where you're at and where we can address it, because we've talked about this item extensively, and I can tell you, we have tried to work up as much information and solutions as we can. Also, let me bring out the city code that references this item. The council will be providing insight and opinion on this, as they are the legislative portion of the code for the city, but most of this will be directed by Public Works Director Trimble, so let me state that as well. And referencing to the codes, they will come out of section 655-27 and 658-13, just as a reference for storm sewer and drainage. So, at this point, I think you want, just to start out with just a few comments, and then we'll take comments from the audience.
Absolutely. I've been involved, I've spoken with a lot of you over the years, as this problem has developed and progressed, and, yeah, the thing that I want to emphasize is, when the city took ownership of this development in the two phases that it came in, there was not a drainage issue in the backyard. The water was going where it's supposed to, you know, and we had, there was flow going to the storm drain system, near as we can tell. Our engineer would not let us take possession of that if there was a drainage issue in this area. I've heard rumors that maybe the residents were hoping that the city might step in and do something in their backyards and correct the drainage issue, and I would recommend to the council that we do not, for a lot of reasons. That being said, I understand your frustration, I understand how some residents of that area don't think it's their problem, and other people are bearing the brunt of the load. And in my opinion, the simple fact is that everyone who has property bordering those two phases of that addition, in between Little Street, Longworth, and Howard, is part of this issue no matter what. Your roofs, your driveways, your yards, all, and some pumps in a lot of cases, and eavespouts in some cases, all drain to that property. So whether you have a wet backyard or not, you're involved. So, that being said, I feel like the best possible solution is for all of you to come up with a solution to handle this drainage in the most efficient way that you can, and I am willing, even though I'm going to recommend the city not be involved at all in getting into this project, I'm willing to facilitate trying to come up with a solution. If you all are willing to work with me, we can meet here in City Hall in a neutral location and meet with someone who doesn't own property in the area, and maybe we can come up with a, with a solution to get this thing fixed. I think there's some things that could be done that have been left undone. I think that there is a solution short of a full-on revamp of the backyard. It needs work, a lot of work, it's obvious. So that's, I believe, my position, and the council will tell you whether they agree or not, but that's where I'm at with this solution. Our storm drainage system is capable of taking any water that runs through those backyards. Everybody's seen some flooding issues down along Roosevelt Street, and we do have an issue that's on the agenda for later, as far as a culvert that needs to be upsized going across Roosevelt, and we will address that. But that water is not backing up into your backyards. It's not. It's not causing your water issue. So, it needs to be handled on our part, that is something we will take on and we will take care of. So, that's where I'm at on the.
And my, and each councilperson will just give a short comment. My comment is, I'm sympathetic to it, I don't live in your addition, but I'm wet in my addition, and I'm very sympathetic to this issue. Also, four out of five councilpeople live in your neighborhood, so I'm sure they're sympathetic as well, but I'll let each councilperson here make a comment, if they would, please, in reference to this before we go. I don't know if you have a spokesperson or not, but we'll just address it here in a moment. Go ahead, Councilman Saris.
Guy, I appreciate your willingness to help out. I know this is kind of a sticky issue, it's been going on for a long time, so I hope we can help you guys find a resolution, but I agree that it's not necessarily something that the city would step in on, so.
Any comments?
I understand the situation. I was standing by back there for almost a week, so I know that it does happen, but I think we just need to work together and come up with a solution that meets everyone's needs, that is not super costly.
Obviously, you know that I have water in my backyard a lot, through that swale and through that ditch as well, so I want to make sure that we come up with a solution that's going to, I don't have it nearly as bad as many of you do, but it certainly impacts my yard as well, so I would like to come up with a solution as well, to make sure that whatever we need to do, we can do.
All right. If you have a spokesperson or somebody that is adversely affected by this more than others, would they like to speak first? Yes, sir.
Darren Wickman, 301 Longworth.
Yes, sir.
First, who stated there's no tile back there, that people are supposed to tie their something up, so. I was just told tonight, Clayton was putting eight, or a six-inch tile back there to tie in all the houses. They're supposed to be tied in through Rex's development. So, if there's no record on his point, I mean, I understand you guys don't have any records of anybody there. There's an 18-inch tile back there that nobody has clues about, that we want to tie into. But, like I said, I just found out tonight that Clayton was actually got paid by Rex to put in an eight, or a six-inch tile in there for the drainage. So, now it's plugged, it worked before, now it's not, and we're just trying to figure out the best way to fix it.
Okay, I'm going to step up here a second. It's my understanding this development was approved in two phases, 2002 and 2005, and that this tile you're referring to is basically through here that we think goes into here. This is what you're referring to, this area here?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's coming right down through here.
And that.
And then I was told it wasn't tied into the storm here. And then Kent Naylor was on the board, or part of the city, and somehow it got approved to reduce down to four inches to tie into a manhole.
Okay.
Which is not right, but still. Because we sculpt up the manhole, we found rock, where it was plugged, but we're like, no, it's six-inch, can't be. Well, like I said, Bingo, Matt, Plitch, he's the one that put it in. He said they stopped right short of the road, and they reduced it down to four inches to tie into the storm.
Because the box probably only had four inches in with it, I suppose.
They had to drill it in.
I called down in the hole. Sorry, Troy Riggs, 14 hour.
Okay.
I called down in the hole and shoved the camera up.
Yeah.
I know the difference between boards, it's only a four-inch tile coming into that culvert.
Point, point that out, which one here?
So I went to the manhole, right here.
This opening here.
I went down there and shoved the camera up, and there's only a four-inch tile.
That's going north?
Going north, coming into that, and I mean, it was, it was flowing water. This, this used to work. It, it used to work. I mean, when it rained like it has a couple weeks ago, there, there's a river that runs through the backyards, there's a river that runs between Chester's and his neighbors when it rains like that, and, and I think Chester's been flooded your basement two or three times.
Now, I'm assuming.
So, I know you're sympathetic to this.
I'm assuming many of these folks are knocking out to the roadway here and, and here, so it's these folks here that are greatly affected, because they have to come into this drainage area here. And so this needs to be corrected into this area here, and if the outlet is into here, it sounds like if it is four inch, it's either blocked, broken, something.
Yeah, we ran into, and how would you tell if it's fresh gravel? As much water still comes through gravel, but we hit gravel, and you know, all you can see with the camera is gravel.
When I mentioned before, there was one thing left undone, you sent a camera in from one end. We don't even know for sure if that tile you sent the camera into, if Bingo, if Bingo's memory is right, if it's the right one.
He said he's got a map of it, actually, but he's not. This is Jeremy Haley, Fields Oak Company, Henley Construction, I've had him come out and.
Oh, I know, I know.
Scoop this one job.
But before you guys spend another dime, this is where I'm saying, you need to dig north of there, you need to dig in, in an area, we know, the tile's been exposed here in John Cole's backyard, we know there's tile there. That needs to be camera, before you guys spend another dime, because you could be wasting money just guessing that everything's still in place, and then as houses were built and people changed their drainage patterns, that could have been cut in three places, it could have been relocated in three phases. I mean, how many people living on that street built their own house and would have, you know, how many of you built it new? And you know what could have happened, you know? John's saying he built his house new, and he knows what's going on on his backyard, but what about every other neighbor out there? My, my point is, a little bit more investigation could save you all a bunch of money.
Oh, absolutely, but that's going to cost money.
And it is going to cost money, to the point of why, one big reason why the city shouldn't be involved, if we get in your backyard, we have to get our engineer involved, and it's not going to be what Jeremy's proposing, it's going to be a 60-foot wide screw-up through your backyards with dump trucks, and that line is going to get dug in by backhoes, and it's going to be a mess, and it's going to take a year and a half to recover, and it's going to be triple the cost of what you're talking about, even if you go with the plan that's on the table now. So my point is, let's figure out exactly what's going on. Get a camera somewhere in that tile line farther to the north, you might have 400-foot of perfectly good functioning tile.
I tied into the pipe that you exposed through here, that and the four inches coming off the neighbors, whatever, I tied that in, ran down to the 18-inch and right around.
Yeah.
So clearly, it's probably pretty good up north.
Yeah.
Put a shot down south, we already know now.
Right. But then to the issue of, and I know this is an issue, to the issue of who's responsible for that, the marsh is in about four backyards, right? The swamp is four to five backyards.
Six, three.
But, whatever, but every single household whose water drains that way, it is your problem, because.
Mine don't drain that.
Eventually, you're off your backyard at this.
Four, four.
That's fine, that's fine, but you're still putting, you're still putting water in the backyard. Everyone is, everyone on the east end, everybody on the, on the south end, everybody on, on both sides of that valley are putting water. An example would be, don't agree with the wind it hit, but Des Moines Water Works sued every farmer up the watershed from Des Moines for nitrates in the water. Now, why is the guy in Calhoun County by Sac City, Iowa, getting sued for putting nitrates in Des Moines water? Because all of his drains comes from the river in Des Moines. That's why he is included in the lawsuit, just like the guy that's right outside the pumping station in the river. So that's why I'm saying, it is all your problem, everyone's problem. And the quicker we can get it solved with the least amount of action in your backyards, the happier everyone's going to be. I mean, putting in a whole new tile line, yes, would solve the problem, but I don't think you need to spend that much money, you know? I think we can keep this down. I know there's also some concerns about spending a lot of money. Some people maybe don't have it to spend. We can trim it down a little bit, maybe everybody can afford it, you know? But it starts with figuring out how much good pipe we got.
Absolutely.
So, again.
Basically, we just, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm just saying, if you're.
We just want you guys on board, personally just showing us and saying, hey, you're cheering a lot, we got to do it together.
No, 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 no.
You've seen it, there is a problem.
Let me, like, say you come up with, you know, an argument, you can tell, hey, this, Then we, like, say you come over the, you know, in an argument, you can tell him, hey, this, let's try this. And then, you know, we've worked together.
I'm more than happy to facilitate. There's no problem. If the council is willing to let me, I'm happy. Ultimately, there's two pages here of regulations concerning stormwater and drainage. But the code starts out, like many city codes do. It says, "Council will not approve any plat or subdivision which does not make adequate provisions for storm or floodwater runoff channels and basins." And then it goes on and on and on. It goes on to, but it always refers back to those subdivisions and the subdividers. When they build out these subdivisions, they have to get approval from the city. And they have to show that they put in water drainage, storm runoff drainage. I wasn't here in 2002 and 2005, but I am relatively confident that when this subdivision was put in for these houses, that they put in adequate drainage. It would have been easy to do at the time. The other city streets are built to accept it. It's 2018, almost 19, and we haven't seen a large amount of complaints. I'm gonna speak for myself. I've been here almost three years, and this has not come up before. Now, there was a larger amount of water the other day, and it's probably broke or crushed, you know? I can't say as to what occurred in 2002 or 2005. Like I said, I don't have those plans in front of me. I find it difficult to believe that the city approved a subdivision with no drainage right down there.
We have the record.
Right.
We have the record of it.
Right.
Okay, so...
I don't have it in front of me, but I find it difficult to believe.
So I understand. We need to do the best thing we need to do. But then you're telling me that your engineers signed off on it or it wouldn't have been okay. Unless you're also telling me we have no record or...
No, I don't have it in front of me. It sounds like it's something that maybe we can get done. The point I'm trying to make is, what is the will of the crowd here? What are you wanting to see done from the city with this? Because if the end game is, look, we want it fixed and we want the city to pay for it, is that what you want? Or are you wanting us... What do you want from us? Go ahead, sir.
Todd Wagner, 312 Howard. I think the reason everyone's here is, I mean, you initially said, you know, there are people saying it's not their fault and all this kind of stuff. I would say that we've pretty much come together and said, look, we're gonna fix it one way or another. The problem is, we don't want to put a Band-Aid on it. And based on the costs that we're looking at, we're a little bit worried we're putting a Band-Aid on it when the thing was never built right to begin with. I mean, most likely, you know, there have been conversations with Rex, there have been conversations with Naylor. Everybody's like, ah, I don't know if there's even a tile back there. Well, obviously, we're finding out that somebody put a tile in. The city knew about it, didn't know about it, turned their head the other way, whatever the situation may be. Okay, either way, we want to fix right. And getting a group of people here and saying, you know, well, the bill can be this, or this, or this, or this, or this. If you really want to fix right, the bill's gonna be this. That's all well and good. But what happens when it breaks again? Then we're all sitting there going, okay, now we gotta look here and look here. And so I think the whole reason that we're here, and I have had the least experience with it. I mean, I'm probably the newest one here. But I think the reason we're here is we don't want to put that Band-Aid on it. You know, we're not saying, hey, city, just pay for it and just be done. I mean, we don't expect that. I know there are ways of getting reimbursed for that. The people who give the improvement are levied a tax or however that works out. I know in some municipalities, there's drainage districts that are created specifically for situations like this. Where the city then, I mean, it's almost like an easement, but it's more of a, hey, listen, we're gonna we're gonna put this type of thing in and we're gonna take care of it. We're gonna be assessed the value of the repair. We just want it done right. And yes, we can send more cameras up. I mean, I know that we've done that. I haven't, I'm hearing some of this just based off of what other folks have said. But I know for a fact that there's been a camera run up it. And you can say, you know, it's cut here, it's cut there. We can find out all these different things and still be 12 grand and make it right. And maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but we're not just saying, hey, city, pay for this. You know, we're saying, listen, is there any way there can be some involvement with you guys? We know it's gonna cost more money. We know there's gonna be engineers, you know? But then it's done right. And nobody has to worry about it again. And when I'm trying to sell my house or... And the other thing that we have concern about is what's going on north of us with those new houses that are being built?
They're not putting any water in your neighborhood. That's all going down the city storm sewer. It's not making it seem...
But if they cut in the field tile on the new start...
No, they cut across all the field tiles when the first of this drainage issue was started. And all the field tiles coming from the north got cut and crushed.
And no ground cover flow either?
See, the thing is, when that addition was put in, all that was probably required by law was that the water flow downhill. And since then, you have lawns grow, you know, how lawns grow when you cut grass and the grass remains there. Trees have been planted, bedposts have been inserted. The list goes on and on. So now the water can't flow downhill like it was originally intended. That's why when we're saying that our engineer approved the plan, it's because it had the proper drain and it had the proper drainage to drain the water out of those backyards. In that day and age, there was no provision to put sump pumps and eaves troughs into the storm sewer. That just wasn't being done. The new addition, every house has an inlet into a drainage tile or a storm sewer in front of their property. So it's a new age. I mean, it's, it became evident, especially in towns that have drainage problems, that we need to get that water out of the backyard and into the storm sewer system, which it is in that addition. You know, I told Jeremy, and I talked a little bit the other day. Honestly, you can alleviate a lot of problems simply by regrading the entire backyard. It would require pulling some fence out. But if you regraded the entire thing, got a line to move a couple of their transformers, you'd probably, most of that storm water would flow over the surface of the ground. It'd be gone. But right now, it's...
And then everything, everybody's dumping in.
No, no, no. But that adds an extra layer then. So then you got the tile where people actually have their sump pumps erected, connected, et cetera. That is a new wrinkle. But as far as surface water goes, when you have these drainage vents, your water would disappear, it was grading correctly. Because it would flow, most of it would be off the surface. Now it sits in pools. And then you add the extra layer of people are pumping their sump pumps into the tile, and the tile can't take it, so it's just coming up. So it's a two-fold problem.
And you would have that, you grade it, and then you keep mowing grass for 10 more years. It's gonna, it's gonna build that back up. Dead grass makes dirt, right?
Every eight years, we overlay Main Street. Guess what? It's just a perpetual maintenance issue. You have a maintenance issue in your backyard. Every backyard...
The yard and the erosion swallows, and next up would go the drag creek shed, which would be rocks, erosion rocks, all the way through, all the way up. And that way, that sill doesn't fill up. Now, we're talking another wrinkle, another step.
Recognize, Councilman Johnson.
Did I understand right that somebody, Troy, I believe, said that at one time, the tile worked?
Yeah, it used to work.
Is that a true statement?
It's probably been three or four years ago. It still worked. Like, heavy, heavy rain, you would still have a river run through there. But it would disappear in a day or two. Now there's water that actually just sits in it.
Sean over to, and I, Longworth. I disagree with that assessment. So we moved in in November. We live, which is about right here. We moved in in November of 2009. And we have had standing water in our backyard since the spring of 2010. So we have always had water.
But again, we still, we know there's tile to the north. We still do not know where that tile goes. They may have crossed, they may have crossed a field tile. And that tile may go in between your house and your neighbor to the north and go out to the field to the west.
And I respectfully, first of all, I respect all the council members and thank you for giving your time. However, the assessment in the ordinance, to me, reads that the city would have to approve a plan to adequately, adequately provide stormwater drainage to that development.
That is correct. It did when it was accepted.
Okay. It did when it was accepted. We're in a new age. It's not adequate. This drainage is not adequate for our neighborhood.
Was this before or after he's...
So how can, how can the city of Salvonette tell us that it's adequate at this time?
It's not.
It's not. And that's what the, that's what the ordinance says. I don't wanna have to look at the ordinance says. Darren McQuent, Tom.
Yeah.
As the ordinance...
It does. They have to do it adequate at the time that it's approved. Now, anyone, anyone could build homes or do things that could mess up drainage. I mean, if you wanted to be a real B-hole about it, you could build, you could drain your stuff to dump all over your neighbor if you wanted to. That wouldn't get the city involved with it, though. That's a civil problem between you and your neighbors if you wanted to. Or you could do the right thing and knock it out to the road or whatever you want. There are things that could be done in any development anywhere in the city where you could really adversely affect drainage. So I agree with that. I know where you're going with this. I just want to throw out a suggestion. Remember, anything I throw, it has to be validated by council. To your point that if there's nothing in there, that the city approves something where there's no drainage. I don't have it in front of me. It was what, the point I was making, but I have no doubt that there's a tile in there. Now, if it has collapsed or whatever, is something wrong with it today that wasn't, that was working fine when it's approved, I tend to agree. That's not the responsibility of the city. Let me finish. I believe Guy has said that he will oversee with all of you, a group of you, or one of some of your representatives to spearhead getting this looked at. I don't believe that's a city expense, but I would like to say, if the council approves, we would support Guy's time, meaning his salary, or any city items, equipment, or whatever necessary to have him do that. If that pans out and the scoping of it determines that there is no drainage in there, none whatsoever. It's just flat ground and we approved a plat like that, even though I wasn't here when it was approved, I would call for a motion that would put that, some or all that expense on the city.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Now, that doesn't mean the council's gonna approve it. That just means I would call for it, that we were neglect at the time in 2002 and '05, and that we approved a plan with zero drainage. I don't think that's going to occur, by the way. I think there is some tile in there, and it's probably changed over the years in one form or another.
And we could maybe get by with replacing and upsizing 100 feet of it, and it'll go right back to working better than it ever did.
So...
Versus, I don't know how many thousands, 700 feet. That would be awesome. And I'll grab the shovel and dig right next to it.
Yes, sir. What's the process for getting that approval, basically saying, okay, there's adequate drainage? I mean, in most of those situations, there's some type of engineering where the developer brings it in and says, okay, this is our plan, and they stamp approved. So what would the process have been? Or somebody, and then at that point, there's an inspection. Somebody walks out, looks in the hole and says, yep, you did what you said you were gonna do.
Yeah. We know what that process looks like in the new additions, because we've been present for that. Our engineers are right there when that's done and they review it. We have an excellent engineering firm for the city. It's, both phases of the addition were engineered by Rex's engineer. They were presented to our city engineer. Our city engineer looked over the plans, approved them. We can't do any more than that.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking. I'm not saying anything wrong was done.
Right. All we can do is take our engineer's opinion. He said it was, everything was adequate. And, you know, and as far as everything, every one of you homeowners has probably done something inadvertently or on purpose to affect the drainage in your backyard.
Or previous owners.
Or previous owners. You know, that's what we're trying to say here.
But here's where, here's where I disagree with. We may have done that individually.
Yeah.
And we probably all have. But we're beyond that right now. You keep coming back to, I believe you keep coming back to this person that doesn't approve it. We want this problem fixed, so...
That it's not city-owned property and there is not city-installed utility in that backyard. And that's why the city is not gonna get involved. In the back, in your backyard, there's an easement back there for utilities, of which the city has no utilities. It's power-only, to my knowledge. The line has power in the backyard. And easement only means that they have the right to go in and work on their stuff. There's no ownership of land. You guys own all of that land.
I'm happy with...
Is it, do we have the pleasure of the council here to support any time or in a way necessary of city assets, including Guy's time and salary to support the investigatory portion of this to find out what's wrong?
Investigation?
Yes. No expense of the city to fix it right now, just to support the folks to get this figured out. Moved by Shans?
Second.
Second by Sarah. So any other discussion? I just get a motion off the floor here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, you have the support of the city from the Public Works Director. Now, moving forward, if you're gonna facilitate with representatives or the whole group or whatever is necessary to try to get this figured out, what's wrong for sure. Moving forward, if there's an expense with that, it's gonna take the council to determine whether or not they're going to share or pay for any costs associated with that. I seriously doubt you're gonna get that. This would probably cause a slippery slope that even US citizens wouldn't like to see city-wide. Things cost money and, you know, were put into place to oversee stuff that doesn't cause your taxes to go up. So I doubt that you'd even want to go down that road. I could also encourage you at this time, you all came together for this. It might be a good time to do an association or something related to your covenants or something like that. Because obviously, it helps, oh, I'm sorry, I brought up covenants, an association. Because it helps to have one or two people that can act as liaison to us and we can resolve things like this much quicker. Yes, did you have, somebody had one to speak? Yes, sir.
Go, go ahead, John. John Cole, 301 Longworth. Quick question. Is the city still providing TIF money to Rex Naylor on the development?
I've, we have TIF west of town. I don't know if it's all that whole area or not, but I believe there is still TIF.
That's, that's used up on that part?
Is it all? Every bit of it's done?
On that addition.
Oh, okay, on that addition. I believe there is some...
I'm saying just in general.
I have to pull where all the TIF districts are to tell you. There are some west over there, I believe, so.
And then, I was the one that brought this to the council back, what was it, August 11th, 2016? And at that time, the council said that we needed to take the water to the surface to let it drain. Because I did have property damage. It heated all of my deck posts. It also, let's see. It heated my stairs. There was actually city water in the pipe. So we dug down and I had somebody dig down and I brought it to the surface. Don't mean potentially onto my neighbors, but that was the recommendation is by the city, they weren't gonna get involved. And that was, that was the statement is, you know, to bring it to the surface and it was supposed to drain. But that didn't, you know, that's why there's a lot of people that's... Bringing this to the attention is, we did act upon what the city had recommended.
When you say bring it to the surface, you're talking like gutter runoff to pop-ups?
No, no. I brought the six-inch tile that's in question that may approach.
Sure.
That comes, we believe, we know it comes up to this corner for sure.
Right.
I believe it comes into this, it actually comes within six feet of, on this side of the property line. It runs down. Right about here, it's roughly about four, three to four feet down, a six-inch tile that brought, that I brought up to the, up to the surface because it was plugged to the south of us. So there is a six-inch tile there. We know that. We've attached to it. We've brought it to the surface. So that's not even a question.
Saying I believe it's there.
Yes, no, yeah. I know, I know you were that. You guys were well aware of it. It was there, right? Everybody's seen it. So in, upon digging that up and bringing it to the surface, I reached out to Rex Naylor, asked him if he wanted to see it, and he said there's no tile back there. Yet he had told Dan Sherman to hook in this house sump pump. I believe you guys on the north are hooked into it too.
I, I gotta, I don't remember the year, but I got a letter from the city that said I was gonna get sued if I didn't. So I called Dan Sherman and he dug up my backyard and I paid him to do it, and he tied it into something. I don't know. I was at work. But I've been through a house, I've lost everything I own, but I guarantee I could find that for a good price. So...
Sure.
So the city made me spend money to tie my sump pump.
Now, to be fair, the city was taking sump pumps out of sanitary sewer.
I didn't go to a sanitary sewer.
I, this was before we even did sump pump inspections. This, you and I have talked about this before. I don't know where that came from.
There, there wasn't letters sent from the city of Salvonette that demanded. And there were, obviously, there was no way they might tie it into the sanitary sewer.
Yeah. Which, that's what the other ordinance I brought up at the beginning, you, I just wanted to address. If it was a sanitary sewer issue, you can't do that.
And that order is, it's never gonna be dry.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Right, 310 Albert Street. So I'm gonna circle back to Guy's comments. So I live here. There is a tile here, right about here. Mark and Julie, they live right here. There is a tile that comes down and goes over. And as John has stated, he had dug up this tile. So currently, today, there's a tile that comes four feet out of the ground. This water from my house, Mark's house, these two houses is flowing. So Guy, do not waste your time shoving a camera up here. It works.
That's, that's fine.
It's good from that point itself.
We did, we, the biggest reason to stick the camera in is to find out where this tile actually connects. If Bingo's memory is right and it's necked down to a floor and goes into that storm box, there's work to be done because there's rock however many feet up from the storm box. There's, I know tree roots are in it.
We had it located too, and there's a gas line right there. They might have just tried to see the gas.
Yeah, hard to say. I mean, there's so many possible... But what I'm saying is, the bid that you got from Jeremy here a while back was to put in all new tile. That's why I'm saying, figure out what's broke and fix that. And to the Band-Aid statement, a properly placed tile that's flowing will dry those backyards out. There's millions of miles of tile and farm ground all over this country. If that tile is flowing to the right spot and is unobstructed, it will dry those backyards out. It doesn't need to be a three-foot wide trench with... It doesn't need to be a three-foot wide trench with twenty-five dump truck loads of rock bedded around a pipe with fabric around it, which is what you're gonna get from a city-involved project with an engineer involved. It's gonna cost thirty-five or forty thousand dollars. So, I understand not wanting it to be a poor, shoddy job, but I'll... But when it done right, I went over and looked at this when I was first notified by your group and then I went over and looked at it again today and looking down across it, there are a lot of fence rows, or fence lines in there. So you want it done right the first time, you don't wanna keep digging this up and repairing it. Five years, two years, ten years, fifteen from now, I mean, get it right.
And Guy, you seem pretty educated in the laws. Correct me if I'm wrong, if water flows from here to here, which is my house, and eventually ends up down here, that's not my problem, because this is natural flow, I'm not talking, I'm sorry, I'm not talking about underground, I'm talking above ground.
It is natural flow, but it's just like the example I stated, the water that's coming off of your property is flowing down through this area.
Which is fine by the law.
Absolutely, it's fine for everybody to, to flow down by the law.
Thank you. So, again, I live here, if somebody here plugs this, it's not my responsibility. You just destructed a flow that naturally worked for years.
If this is left and you guys can't get along and it doesn't get fixed, it will be. Because pretty soon you will not be able to get rid of your sump pump water.
Only by that, but by law, I'm not responsible for fixing this. I can show you that I will co-count me laws.
But your water flow is flowing into every other section of everybody else's property that we have no control over, because you're tied into the same line. You might get great flow.
You want that comes down too? You brought the wrong, wrong line. You bought the wrong line.
Oh, really?
We've got to...
Sit down.
Well, I've read the rule, we'll, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it, Guy?
Sorry.
Am I wrong?
No, I'm not gonna make a comment on that, I'm not gonna...
That's a bunch of crap, sit down.
We'll, we'll, we'll try to facilitate it and we'll get, we'll try to facilitate it and get it corrected for all of you. So, do we have an ample agreement that will start the process of investigating this and getting it corrected?
Yes.
All right, so while I've got you all here, can we, is there, I know it's hard, is there any possible day of the week that you could say where this could happen, where you could all...
We've been meeting every Wednesday for the last, probably, month? Month, for six weeks, I say, say Wednesdays is probably...
Seven fifteen?
Seven fifteen.
I know it's late, I've got a six-thirty to eight thing on Wednesday, can we go earlier or later?
Yeah, be later.
That, yeah, I'm tied up from six-thirty.
You're never gonna get everybody scheduled.
We're not gonna get everybody, no.
You know, if we get three or four of us there and then we can... Eventually that...
What, what's time?
So I can't...
Thing is, I just can't go take it to New York.
No, 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 we, the first meeting's gonna have to be if we can figure out if we can, can, if someone will allow us to enter the title at that point to figure out where we're going. Anyway, back to a meeting day, any, does a Sunday evening work for anyone? I mean, Monday, Thursday and Monday, Monday evening, Monday evening, Friday evening?
So Ryan Christiansen, do a little long run between, where's that, these two, right? So, the, I will authorize you come into my backyard, dig it up, because the, I am not confident that there's a drainage tile that's running behind my backyard, behind Sean's backyard.
Okay.
That's great, so the, I moved in two years before you guys built it and we did build there. I was told there was a drainage tile there. The day I moved in, in that, that first year, we had a puddle, a small pond, at the south end of our property line, bordering their north line.
Okay.
And that has been persistent and has consistently gotten worse and worse and worse and backed up. So, to say that I think I have a tile in my backyard, I'm not confident.
And that's fine, that's...
So I'll authorize you, whatever you want, to come in, dig a hole and get it found out.
All right.
Um, and we can probably put this, you know, if there's no tile there, then either I'm responsible for it or the city's responsible for it, this is as a...
That's a different conversation, if there's no tile, it's a different conversation.
Yeah, and that's again, changing everything.
Might be cut, might have been rounded, I guarantee you, I've put nothing in my backyard. I'll ask my neighbors, say, no, I don't look outside here.
I got nothing going on Monday, this coming Monday, if you wanna start it then, get as many there as we can do it.
I can do a camera work.
Let's just, let's just leave here first and foremost, don't worry about a camera yet until we come up with a plan and, and get...
As far as the meeting's set right here?
Yeah, let's just come here, that way, you know, we're not in somebody's driveway and we're medium, let's, what we're just gonna do. You've been meeting at seven fifteen before?
Uh, seven...
Seven o'clock, seven o'clock Monday.
All right, it's done.
Thank you.
Um, Guy?
Yeah?
Do you think you can have a report on this by next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, the only other thing I'd say, would you notify the council members as well? Don't let a quorum show up, but notify them so if one wants to attend that lives in the area.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
All right, very good. All right, are we good? All right, very good, thank you all for coming, that, that takes care of item twelve, one, the Naylor Estates. Anyone that wishes to stay, we invite you to do so, if not, you're certainly free to go. Item number two is the AC/DC club special event permit application.
Thank you guys very much.
You bet, have a good evening, thank you.
Very, very much.
We'll do what we can to resolve this with you.
Well, we...
No, no, I know that, I know we're not the homeowners.
Can we bump up the whole?
Um, the AC/DC permit, where are you at, what I...
Four.
Oh, number eight?
Number eight.
Um, yeah, can I do you right after this, sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, let me address the AC/DC one, then I'll, I'll move you up, is that all right?
Yeah, that's perfect.
All right, number two, the AC/DC club special event permit application, recognize clerk and then, anything to say prior to that? For the application, any change to it, no? All right.
Do that.
Oh, maybe, yeah. So, we'll go ahead and hear the AC/DC update for that, for the permit?
Um, we, we put the permit in, we met with all the neighbors that, the scheduled time, the letter that dropped off. The meeting went well. We left the permit pretty vague, so we can add to it, because things will be fluid and, and so we can get it back in if we need to.
Right.
Um, and we're wondering if there's anything we needed to do with that right now.
Have you guys changed anything since you brought the, so far you're steaming ahead?
Well, we got over the biggest hurdle, meeting with all the neighbors, so, and they were really receptive.
Yeah, I reviewed the permit, you have a lot of time on this.
Yeah.
So, that was one of those things where it looks good, but depending on what the changes are gonna be and how much there are and things like that, you still need a couple items, but you're so far out, there's no need for me to say, hey, you need to add these, because it's probably gonna change a little bit prior to the...
And that's, you know, if the tractor pole goes off, I mean, things can change, you know, if we don't get the play or whatnot.
Yeah, I think the biggest question the last time that you spoke to council was, make sure the neighbors don't have an issue with it and I don't think you'll have any problem with the council, I think the council said the same thing. I'll refer back to council on questions. No? Same thing, I think you're on, you're in good shape here, you didn't have any pushback at all from the folks that live in the area?
No.
Okay, well, all right, great, I think we're in good shape. How long before you think you'll be able to solidify plans on this?
We're looking right now, um, we wanna start building, we start anytime.
Okay.
Um, the main thing with the end here, just talking to you guys, is we, like I said the last meeting, we want to make sure that you guys were on board, that city was on board with it. Again, we met the neighbors to make sure they were on board with it, we weren't gonna have any issues before we started bringing anything in.
Right, I'll echo my question from last month, the adjacent property, I believe it is to the west of that, some form of Naylor's property in there. You spoke to them, they don't have any issue with this or anything?
You're actually at least a little bit down.
Yeah, as I recall, there was some portion of it to the west there. Yeah, and there's no issue with that or anything?
Um, as of right now, no, uh, we spoke with the Nalers, we spoke with John Airy and Cal Beadbetter, he's the one who would be renting the property, he's just gonna put hay ground in there. They've come up with a lease agreement, they're waiting for our approval before they go ahead and sign a few papers on it.
I see, that's a good point, make sure you get that documented.
That's what's, we're waiting for that.
Make sure you get that documented, because times change, so get it documented.
Yeah, this looks good, I don't have any other questions on this, anything?
Just always remember to keep me in the loop if there's anything I can do, you know, because I can, I can easily reach these people if they need to know something and I can help with a lot, so...
We also did get a grant to put permanent bathrooms in through the county.
Oh, okay.
I mentioned to Guy, so we're looking, you know, I'm doing that, this through the winter and, and, and feel there.
So then you've got water and sewer hookups available there?
No. We found out that's a little problem, water is close by, we can dig in and tap into water, but sewer ends, it's a, it's a ways.
A hundred feet or so, probably.
Yeah, I think we need to, it'd be a hundred, probably seventy-five foot worth of street would have to be tore up if you put in a line in conjunction the way you normally would. I'm wondering if we shouldn't go with an alternate plan, talk with the homeowners adjacent to the last manhole and see if it's possible if we can shoot up into the right away and send that surface up the right away, so you're not tearing out seventy-five foot worth of street, putting a patch in, which I would not like to see happen, that's a pretty good street down there. Rather not cut it.
Go into the manhole then?
Yeah, go into the manhole, just, you'd have one chunk to cut out to get to the right away and then run that line along the right away. The water vein is over there too, as long as we can put it in and keep the mandatory separation between the sewer and the water line, I think it's doable, I'm not positive yet, but I think it's doable, but you'd have to, even though it's our right away, I still would not wanna make the, the property owners mad, make sure we, they know we put it back, everything back for them so that it's, you know, the driveway's not all tore up forever and the grass comes back good. But it, it's gonna take some investigation, yeah, basically. Chip comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we're gonna be donating quite a bit of work to the track construction and Guy and I talked the other day about how the best scenario for truck traffic, dump trucks coming in, why you have some side dumps bringing the clay in, and Guy suggested business hours, school hours. Keeps kids in school and that way we're not disturbing evenings, suburbs, you know, basically family time at home. That's what we're gonna try most to do.
Okay.
Stay, stay most of that trucking in throughout it during the business hours. There might be some weekend work when we're, when we do build the track, but that's probably gonna be one long day and we should be out, that'll probably be a Saturday, that, because that's the only way we can volunteer to really come in homes.
Good plan.
Any other questions on this?
I just wanna say, I appreciate your effort, especially meeting with the neighbors to take that step.
Oh, um, Mayor, you might wanna...
I was gonna motion, is that what you're...
Oh, yeah. What do you want?
I was gonna move to approve their, their permit.
Oh, uh, that's fine, we can, we understand it might be edited a little bit later.
Yeah, that's okay.
You could even motion approved as written with possible amendments, or something.
Being that it's tied with benefit day, we're gonna see this again as far as their insurance and that kind of stuff, so... So Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the application of the special event permit for AC/DC for next year's tractor pole, with knowledge that there could be potential changes.
All right, motion by Sarah's, second by Henry's, any other discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries, thank you. All right, I'm gonna make one edit to the agenda, I'm gonna move item eight up to discuss the culvert on Roosevelt's, or culvert on Roosevelt and possible motion. What's the background on this, Guy? I think we did, you wanna get the background? No, Guy doesn't.
I've got plenty of chairs, I have to put a back on the chair.
He's famous, hey, he's famous for this. Anyway, any, the background on this and then, I moved number eight up.
Culvert on Roosevelt, that's what we're after.
Okay. Uh, this is the distance, I think, between the turn-in to the development and backup towards third? Yeah, yeah, and, and it's been slow to drain before and the stats will contest that they've had basement issues before because of this. And the new addition is adding load, that sudden outburst that we had was very evident that the new addition is putting extra load down that storm sewer, totally, totally agree with that. And the tube that's going under Roosevelt is half the size of the tube that's coming from the rest of the addition. That's the one coming south there? It's, yes, the one that's coming, yeah, that runs over the south, that big tube. It's inevitable, we are going to have to upsize that, we, we just can't at this point let it go any further, I mean, it... Anything can happen with mother nature, we've seen that in the past, we can do our best and it still might flood down there, but...
Do you still have the accessories page up?
Yeah.
Can you pull that? I don't do good with north and south, so if I can get a picture, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah. Any comments?
I think I know what we're talking about.
Spoke, I zoomed back in.
So I guess one of my questions is, fire station, will it be drained through this culvert or does that one go the other direction?
No, it goes the other way, we need to do a little better job on the backside of Josh's house, actually, of making sure that the water that comes down this ditch goes west, because down here, right here where this little ditch is, there is a big double thirty-six inch culvert that has never been to capacity, it just never, it just never is, there's plenty of culvert.
Can I give you some feedback on that? It seems like the pipe that goes under that driveway is just too high, I don't know if we need to take that down?
Yeah, 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 no, it flowed it up.
Yeah, the water has to get way up here before it hits it.
That would require earthwork on the south side though to get that, what we need? Well, yeah, and that'll be the, that would be part of the project if, okay, so back to the original question, the culvert that goes under Roosevelt here needs to be upsized, but we are also gonna have to work with Rex, because this waterway is gonna have to be shaped and made to handle water. And so, I don't think it's gonna be any more than just getting permission from Rex to say we can bring equipment in and, and make that thing drain, which would make John jump for joy, because he's been trying to get Rex to fix the waterway for years and he won't spend the money. So, that being said, if we're gonna, if we're gonna alleviate some drainage here, this needs it too. If we get both of those waterways flowing like they should, upsize this culvert, except for that very worst of scenarios, we should flow everything away. The other night when it was up, if that culvert was sized properly, we wouldn't have had an issue. When the fire department was there pumping, it wouldn't have been an issue, it really wasn't, because we were not taking any water from the west that night. It was all coming out of the, out of the addition and, and caused the backfill, so...
I don't think you better really clean out that ditch on the south side there, you too.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I mean, we need to...
The water's gonna get so high before it flows.
Yeah, this, right here where my cursor is on the screen, Chester, that waterway needs to be shaped so... I think you're talking east-west, a little clearance in that ditch as well?
Right where the, right where that's small, tube jumps on the south side.
Yeah, yeah.
That needs to be dug out, so it doesn't have to get, ditch get half full before it will run to the...
Now, if approved, what's the timeline on this, isn't there crops still to the south? Yeah, absolutely, and, and it would have to be engineered, we're gonna have to have an engineer tell us how, what kind of drainage we're gonna need, because he'll have to look at, at all of the additions combined and there is stormwater calks on all of those additions, so we gotta combine them and see what our flow is. I mean, we know the tube coming out of the addition is big enough, because it was sized appropriate to those additions being built over the years, but the one going under our road was never changed and so now it needs to be changed. It probably should have been done a while back, but it didn't seem like, seem like our bigger problem was diverting the water. Before, it was diverting the water that used to come down this ditch and we got most of it diverted. And I don't think we take hardly any water from that ditch anymore, except to the east, it all goes west now and that was the point. And that has helped the situation, but still, with the extra roads and concrete to the north.
I don't think they realize how much that north addition is gonna break.
No, no, and as far as the fire station goes, part of the point of taking all this filter it is, we can put that baby up and have it never be in jeopardy.
No, I was just looking at where that was gonna run off, I didn't want it to become the problem. I was pretty certain it went the other direction.
But when that station is built, this area where it flows down this ditch and depending on what we do with will and when we do it, will have to be addressed, you know, either put into a tube or we'll have to, we'll have to keep that open drainage ditch available for that water to run down and get away, so that we don't jeopardize the, the, the fire station at all and the driveway for the fire station.
I do know this was hours of debate with previous council meetings as far as culvert size and what's added, those types of things, so I'm also gonna ask Guy, I think one of the other things that held us back was road improvement in that area. I mean, that's, that's seal coat, right?
It is, it is.
And we have problems where that meets our concrete. I mean, I think this is an opportunity to look long-term, you know, if we're gonna be tearing it up, how far do we go? Will we put back in that type of thing as well? So this is, unfortunately, it is more than just drainage.
Well, we have, yeah, and we have, the county's concrete comes to, right in this neighborhood somewhere, and we have concrete back here. It's not, I'm not saying it's gonna be cheap, don't get me wrong, but it's not that big of a stretch to either pour concrete street or even go with a thick asphalt street that isn't just peeling up like the seal coat currently is peeling up on the edges and potholes and... Since this is calling for action, is this a 2018 project? I would say so, yeah.
Well, probably 2019.
2019.
By the time we get it engineered and we're gonna act upon it somehow.
Yes, so it's an FY19 project? Yeah, I think so.
So that means it's a way I can budget for it, you know, but it's hard to budget when you don't know what.
But we start the wheels turning now.
Start the wheels.
It's not gonna be a big elaborate engineering project, you know, they should be able to whip it off fairly quick. We'll have a budget number by February, maybe we can even start in late May. And then, as long as the contractor's willing to not give his check till July 1st, which is usually common, so...
Well, we gotta watch plant season, though, if we're doing the other side.
Yeah, 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 I mean, that may be going phases. Maybe, maybe we can carve enough money out of this year's budget to do drainage improvements through the field because they can be in place before the culvert is drained.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll just have to take it step by step. Pleasure to the council on this. Do we want a motion without an estimated cost or what do you want to do?
I would love to pursue an engineering quote and get a plan in place for the culvert improvements on Roosevelt.
So, you want a motion on that or do you just want to tell Guy, have Guy pursue it?
No, I made a motion on that.
Okay, we have a motion then to pursue then, a second by Josh. Any other discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Bye-bye, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, the motion carries, we'll go ahead. Guy, would you take care of that, move forward on that for the culvert? And I'm sorry, did you have any comments on that?
No, not necessarily. I think most of the questions are answered. I mean, we are moving in a couple weeks, but I wanted to have a voice for the new neighbors.
Hey, then we're not gonna do it then.
Right, cancel minutes, but no, we, I mean, I still feel very strongly about it.
Hopefully we don't have that much rain again in two weeks.
It has been a problem even without that much rain, so it is not just the heavy, heavy rains that get it. We've, we're the ones that asked the fire department to come, so I don't know. It's just been, it's been a consistent problem, so seeing something being done so that we can let our new homeowners know that it is the important part.
Yeah. Okay, we'll address it. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll get back to the regular set agenda. Item number three, tobacco permit applications and possible motion. They were within your packet. Is there any questions in council for these? Is there any edits to these then?
There is none.
Okay, very good. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve these.
So moved.
Moved by Sean.
Second.
Second by Saracen, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Number four, annual SFR, street financial report and possible motion. I understand this is just a, you have it in your packet, you can review those if you want to. It's an eight-page report, the amounts are on page one and two. I understand that this is just an administrative portion for, to catch up with the reporting portion of our annual application to the state for streets. Any questions on this?
Or they'll just say that we spend our money on streets.
Right, and this is the application to it, yeah.
And just back up to indicate that's how we spend it.
I remember these. You're relatively new, but it's the report that we filed. Have any questions about it? You're gonna see it again, so, okay. Then entertain a motion for that as well?
Who will approve the annual SFR, street financial report?
Motion by Saracen. Second by Henderson, any other discussion? Any discussion? Oh, here.
We need a resolution.
Oh, no, it's from the...
Oh, it just says motion, it doesn't get the reso.
There we go.
All right, and then would you, I'm sorry, would you...
I will restate motion to approve resolution 09-2018-01.
Very good. We'll do that one. I have to sign that one too. I can, you want that by roll or just a motion?
I'll just roll.
Roll, okay, would you call that for me, please?
Counselor Saracen?
Aye.
Counselor Sean?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
All right, then we'll go ahead and, that's passed, then we'll go ahead and get that signed off. We'll use the same motion for that. Thank you. All right, and thank you for bringing that to my attention. All right, resolution number five, resolution for, am I seeing it right, Mayers?
Yes.
Or Myers?
Myers.
Myers. Is that the one that's over here by C? Yeah, okay, all right. I think I know where that is. Third addition, Farmstead split and possible motion. I assume that since it's outside city limits, this is the two-mile radius portion one that we've done before. Okay. Any questions on that? Then I would entertain, well, we also have a resolution on that. Is that in here? That's the one too. All right, then would someone make a motion to approve that as well?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 09-2018-03.
Motion by Chester there, or Sean's? Second by Henderson, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Oh, I'm sorry, you want that by roll call as well? I think that one we needed, go ahead.
Counselor Saracen?
Aye.
Counselor Sean?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
All right, let the regular flag, it is unanimous with the form that's here. All right, go ahead and get that one. Number six, the resolution for budget transfers and possible motion. Is this the one that is related to...
The 2018, the year transfers?
Yes. Have you all had an opportunity to look at those? Chester, any comments on that for the transfers? So this is the 2018 transfers, it completes that. You've had an opportunity to take a look at one, they're all on the resolution. Any questions from council members? These are transfers to reconcile the budget. They're listed there in order. Do you want to take a look at them? If not, then I would take a motion also for that resolution.
I will approve resolution 09-2018-02.
Motion by Saracen. Second by Sean's, also, that's financial, that will need a roll.
Counselor Susan?
Aye.
Counselor Sean's?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
Right, that passes as well. Thank you. I'm getting through this all quick, but I want to get done here. Okay, number seven, Lynn County rock shoulder and possible motion. This is the ones that were done just out here that we had to get done in between. Call it, get on the list and they wanted to do it. They were set up and ready to go, so we, it was in the budget, just only go ahead and otherwise we might have had to wait till spring.
Yeah, it was in the claims list. It was for $3,076. I just added it to the, moving on the list of calls that were submitted. Lynn County's, like, there it was.
Any questions with the work or the Lynn County doing it or the claims? We can't even buy it. We gotta pay $17.65 a ton for rock at the quarry, at the quarry. They bring it, truck it up here, place it on the side of the road, it's $20 a ton. Okay. We can't afford to even attempt it. Nor do we even have the equipment to do it right. I mean, I could get it there, but it wouldn't be right. We need a motion for approval then, please?
Who approve Lynn County shoulder rock?
Motion by Saracen. Second by, we'll take Sean's. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Number eight was moved forward, so we'll go past that. Number nine, update on job descriptions for public works and possible motion. This was submitted based from last month, if you recall. We did go ahead and do the salary approvals, but at that council meeting I said that I didn't have the job descriptions updated yet for public works for the public works labor, which is John's position, but we didn't want to hold up their salaries, so we went ahead and did that motion. Those are now completed. I apologize for not having those done last month. It was hectic for me at that time. So if you review your packet, you're gonna see three job descriptions. You'll see the clerks, which was completed at the end of last year, which brought it up to current standards. The only difference on that, you'll see a change from the original one that was approved when we did the second approval for the pay grade. And then you'll see the two new ones, the job description for public works director and one for public works service worker, which is John's. I'd ask that you review those. You can go ahead and do an approval tonight for him if you want to for the job descriptions themselves, but next month we will have to either modify or change the reso for John's because it puts him on the pay scale. And so that puts him in at a grade seven. Danielle is a grade eight, no, no, I'm sorry, eight, a nine, and you're a 10 now, so there won't be changes in salary for the nine and 10. The grade seven does change slightly by...
Twenty-two cents.
Twenty-two cents, so, but it does get them all back on the scales that we've previously approved, so. Anyway, I'd ask you to take a look at those. It doesn't need to be an action item, but be aware unless you have an issue with those job descriptions that it will be for next month, so...
I'd prefer to do nothing actually.
Sure, sure, that's fine. Okay, any questions about the new job description update for the city? All right, that's the thing. Old Business, number 13, update on the property purchase. I can give some or you can give some, I don't care. It's basically done deal, just wait for closing date. Right, we had a update from the attorney saying that everything looked good, it's completed. The, as soon as we get the closing date, we'll be done. The funds are there and we'll have the new location, the new legal location for the fire station. Any questions on that? Good. Number two, update on city hall improvements. TV got its own stain. Bought a camera, it's not gonna work the way I wanted. It's going back. I've got the replacement figured out. Waiting on Gary to get the doors and trim taken off so we can remove the wall. I have paint and not every supply, but the perishable supplies for painting. I'm hoping if we do this as a group, you can bring your roller handles and stuff from home or whatever, but I got roller pads and some sheet brushes and liners, so that's all ready to go. I took off the one light and converted it to an outlet to run the TV, so now I know what I'm up against with removing the other lights as far as getting them all sealed up. And I think that's where we're at. Oh, and phones, we gotta do a two-line phone. And Ben from the telephone office will be here next week to put the second line in here. That way the fax can be on the second line and if I'm on the phone, we'll still have one ringing code here at city hall. We have two phone lights that weren't being used that we reviewed and we had one disconnected and we're gonna have the other one moved here from previous setups, so...
Let me know when you're ready to paint, I'll be happy to come help. I have drop costs and everything else from when I painted my whole house, basically, so...
Yeah.
Changed some rollers and pans and stuff left that are unopened as well, so I'll be happy to come up and assist with that. I think we're looking at a weekend, so we don't kill you with fumes, so. But I'll be happy to assist with that. It will, it will be nice. And so will Josh. Josh can do most of the work then. He can buy the...
There we go. Josh can only do most of the work and he'll buy the food for us.
Doesn't seem fair.
Yeah, okay, any questions on the city hall improvement? Oh, and by the way, I haven't seen Gary, but it looks nice outside too.
Yeah.
I think I got the outside painting done as well, so... All right, update on the portable sign, the stop sign. Can I see it out?
Do you have any?
It's working well, I think.[1554.74]